Good evening, everybody. I'm Matt Yeo. I'm the Vice Chair of the Planning Committee, filling in for Jo Lovelock, who has sent her apologies this evening. I'd like to welcome you all to tonight's meeting of the Planning Applications Committee. Please note that the meeting is being filmed for a live stream available on the council's website, and a recording will be available after the meeting. I gather we've got two public speaking items this evening, and I'll come to those in a minute. So can I take the minutes first? Can we agree the minutes from the last meeting?
Agree.
That's good. And do we have any declarations of interest? No, right, good. Okay. So we've got no public questions, but before we go into the main substantive items of the meeting, I've had an email request from councillor Tony Page to defer the Eaton Place item, which is item number eight on the list, for a site visit by committee members. Now, and the reason for this is, so I need to give a reason, is that it's to give us as members a better sort of context and understanding of the development and any of the various issues that have been, that we've been sort of contacted about. So to do that, though, what will happen is I'm now going to propose a motion to defer. That needs to be seconded by one of the councillors. So I'm seeing councillor Rowland would like to second that. If the, if members are okay with that, then that will mean that we will, we will come back to this item, or might well be at the next committee, which means apologies to those who have come for public speaking, but that means that if we vote successfully on this, to agree this motion, then you won't need to speak tonight, you can go home. And thank you to the Butler Public House Speaker, who has provided us with notes on their submission this evening. So can I just take a vote on that, please? Yep.
Chair, can I just confirm then that the reason for deferral is for an accompanied PAC site visit for members to appraise the context of the site?
Yes.
Is that your understanding?
That is absolutely.
Thank you.
Councillor Williams. So we're not going to speak to the item, but if you've got a comment, then please.
Yeah, if I might do, Chair, yeah, sorry to butt in. I'll try not to speak to the item, I realise that's deferred. I wonder if I could add another reason for the deferral, so that we might get a little bit more information back in our update report, which will come. Is that okay? Let me know if, I'll give it a go, and let me know if you're not happy with it.
It would actually be, what you could do is just email me and the Chair and Richard and Julie, for instance, and that would cover it off. Because.
We normally request through the meeting, but if you're okay to do.
I am, because then we can move on to the rest of the items. Okay? And we just agreed to defer it.
Not entirely, but, I mean, what if my request is refused? I don't know what to do, Chair. Normally, if we want further information brought back through a meeting, we ask for it, and that is voted on. But if you're not, if you're not happy to do that, then I'll email you directly.
I think that that will work. And this is the first time I've chaired the meeting, so I'm having to, yep.
Sorry, just to add, I think it's quite right to clarify.
In that case, yeah, by way of councillor Williams.
As suggested, so if you could please add your reason, so we can actually come back to it. It has been discussed and agreed by all members, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, so, oh, should I go ahead?
Yeah.
Yeah, I feel like I've made a right fuss now, and this is going to be embarrassing. Yeah, it's better be important. So there's two things. The first thing I wanted was that we have in our report information on the planning history of the site, and that includes a 230559, which is an application which is currently marked as invalid. So we can't look that up on the planning portal, and we have no information about what that is. So what I was going to request was just a small amount, not a full planning application, but a small amount of information, just letting us know what that is, why it's not currently valid, and whether it will be coming down the track soon, or whether that's likely to disappear. Otherwise, I don't know what to do with that information in the report. Which would be, I'd be grateful for that, Chair. And my second thing.
That's fine.
My second thing was that the final CGI image that we're provided with in the report shows the potential development behind the heritage asset that we've been, that we will be looking at with the site visit. I wanted to understand the context between the development to the rear of this image and the heritage asset. And the reason I wanted to understand that, and maybe have an officer's comment on it, was that when we discussed the Central Club, consideration was given to providing a minimalist backdrop to the heritage asset in order to allow the heritage asset, that is the Central Club, that is the mural, in order to allow the heritage asset to shine and have dominance in that setting. But I can't see that is happening in this CGI image, and I can't see that particularly discussed in the report. So whether there could be a paragraph on that as well. Sorry to.
That's fine, no, that, yeah, from the indication I've had, that's all, yeah.
That was it, thank you very much.
Do we need to vote, did you say?
Yes, giving us an additional read.
Yeah, so can we just agree on that, that we're going to add those additional questions? I mean, that's fine, by me. Okay, so we're not going to speak to Eaton, to Eaton Place tonight, so that will be deferred presumably to the next committee, then it will come back. I can't remember when that is, is that the beginning of November?
It is, Chair, we will endeavour to get it to that committee for you.
Okay, thank you, and a site visit in between, no doubt.
Yes.
Thank you. The next item is actually potential site visits.
Thank you, Chair. The one on page 17 for you is the Forbury Retail Park outline application. This is a very large and complex planning application. It would be a 16-week application in terms of the guideline timescale for this to be considered by the local planning authority. It's a retail park at the moment. Officers recommend that, given the complexity of the application and the fairly straightforward nature of the site that you're looking at, we would see the best recommended action is that we produce an unaccompanied but detailed briefing note for you to, to give you a good load of background on the application way before it comes to committee. So that would be our recommendation, Chair.
Okay, thanks. Councillor Rowland.
Thank you, Chair. I would actually request that we have an accompanying visit. And the reason I would do so is because despite the fact that we will go out and see something that's not going to be there anymore, and a lot of vacant bits and all of that. I, this, this has been of interest before, and I think there's a lot of dimensions to the site in terms of egress, access, the way it sits in with the rest of the area there, that I think would be well assisted to councillors if officers were there and it was an accompanied site visit. So I would request that this is an accompanied site visit, Chair, thank you.
Councillor Lang.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, I'd just like to second councillor Rowland. And it'd be good if we got officer expertise there. We'll have a detailed report, but we can bounce some questions off them if anything arises on the site visit. Thank you.
Any other comments from councillors? Thank you. Officers, would we be able to, would that, is that possible?
On the, sorry, I'm just taking guidance on this. On the previously agreed site visits, Dwyer Road 230612, we're expecting to come to December Planning Applications Committee, so that there would need to be your PAC site visit before that committee, please.
So would we be, I mean, I know we have scheduled dates of visits, but if we are struggling, then would we be able to have it at a different time? Or have I caused controversy?
Yes, we do work it through, we try and make it the Thursday before that committee, so we'll work on that basis for now, unless it does cause issues, and then we'll try and arrange something else.
So a councillor's happy with that? Yeah, I'm seeing nods, right. Not used to having the microphone on all the time. So the next item is planning appeals. And that's Richard again.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Two appeals lodged, and we have four decisions there, three allowed. You'll also note that we have managed to pull together an appeal report on 551B Oxford Road, which is a bit of a technical matter to do with certificates of lawful existing use and the time periods involved for immunity. A bit of a disagreement as to when these four-year periods should run from and to, and that's what the report discusses. Thank you, Chair.
Do we have any comments from councillors? Nope. And the next item is applications for prior approval, which is Julie. Is she speaking from the internet?
If she isn't, Chair, I don't think we've got anything to add.
Thank you. Okay, right. In that case, we move on to street name assignment at former Reading Golf Course, club even, at Kidmore End Road, Emma Green. So I think we've got Heather, who's here to introduce the item.
Yes, hello. We'd like to propose the names listed in the report for the new streets that need to be assigned at the former Reading Golf Club site. So we would ask that you either approve these street names as set out in the table in 3.3, or that you select some names off the Street Names Proposal List, which is in Appendix 2.
Thank you. Right, so do we have councillors who would like to speak to this item? I can see councillor Gavin.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to propose we do neither of those things, actually. I would like to propose that we think again about this, these names. It's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, isn't it? These are going to be street names which are going to be there forevermore. And on the principle that I've always believed we've worked to, which is that there should be some, where possible, association with the area to which the, where the streets are, and some link to its heritage, then I think frankly the ones that have been suggested lack imagination. This is a golf course, or was a golf course, and it was actually built by, it was designed by James Braid, who was a very famous golfer, won lots and lots of opens, and designed hundreds of golf courses across the country. Very, very famous golf course designer. So I would like to suggest that his name should be reflected somewhere in those street names, James Braid Way, or whatever. But that connection with the golf, I think, could go further. What about Putting Green Drive, Eagle Close, Birdie Avenue, Bunker Road, Cops Close, and so on? I think that we need to reflect where this housing development is in the names of the roads that we choose. And I'm sure other people have got other ideas about things that could be associated with the old golf course. There are things on this list which I really struggle to think of what the connection with this area is. So Tilly Terrace, or Tilly Lamp, I see no connection with North Reading. And there are others on that list where there seems to be little association. So I would like us, I'm afraid, Chair, to do neither of the things we've been asked to do, which is either approve the list or choose ones from a different list. But I'd like us to think again and choose a list of names which are associated with where the building and development is. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gavin. So what I'm going to do is take all of the comments from the councillors we've indicated in the order that they have, and then we'll come back to officers, and the process will be worked out after that. So the next up is, I've got councillor Lang.
Thank you, Chair. I'm in agreement with councillor Gavin, 95% of the way. I would like to put, I also agree that it should have strong links to the Emma Green area, to the golf club in particular, and the overall area, you know. I'd like to nominate somebody who is not on the list, a name that's not on the list. It's Mr John O'Curran. And I'm sure for all the thousands listening in Emma Green that they will know who John O'Curran is. He tragically passed away a good few years ago now. He's a Hiredown old boy, played for Hiredown School, linked to Emma Green Football Club, lived within spitting distance of the golf club. I believe his family may be still up there as well. I've heard that his friends and family support this nomination. And I think that Curtain Terrace would be a lot better than Tilly Terrace. And I also believe that he was at school when councillor Gavin was a teacher at school. And he was certainly there when I was there, and his stepdad was a maths teacher at Hiredown School, so strong links to the community. The only link to golf would be that his friends and family that miss him like to play golf. So that's the link. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I could say something myself, actually, because my parents live just around the corner. And I'm going to be asking them whether they knew him. Councillor Rowland.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to echo and agree with the two statements that have been made previously. And I think councillor Gavin, in particular, points to the real fact that we do need to celebrate and think about the site, certainly its heritage, and to reflect that into the future, which will be around for many years after we're all gone. So I think that her idea there is really quite ingenious, and it was the, it was exactly what I found lacking. Before I come on, because I do also have a nomination, I would like to say that in fairness to officers, the current list that we have, and I did ask councillor Page the last time, because he's always a good memory keeper, the last time this list was visited, and it has been a while, although maybe only five years or so. But this is really frustrating for officers, and I take that on board. And I think that we could and should perhaps look at a possible method of expansion on that. I'll kind of leave that there. Finally, I would like to actually propose, in keeping with the whole idea of naming in the area, naming people of importance and everything. I know a number of colleagues will also recognise the name Christine Borgas, who is someone that we knew as a long-time councillor of many years in Reading, and a long-time resident up north in those parts. And also a real activist and champion for women's education over a long period of time. And out of respect for someone that I knew that influenced me tremendously too, I would just like to ask a consideration about her name being that she did live in that general area. So thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Rowland. I've got councillor Robinson next.
Thank you, Chair. As one of the local councillors, this is important for us. When I did look at the list of names, I was thinking, where on earth have these come from? Saunderson View, make of a historic tractor, once used locally. It doesn't even have a local connection. So I'm, I find myself in the strange situation of fully agreeing with what councillor Gavin, councillor Lang, and I certainly back councillor Rowland as well in terms of her nomination. But I do believe that we should go back, do some thinking, and then come back, add a future date, and decide on them then. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Ennis.
A quick but flippant point, and a useful one. If it's going to be the golf names, I think Good Walks, Spoil Avenue would be a good one. Or Do Something More Useful Than Play Golf Road would be good. But I do want to stress that if you are going to change the list, don't change it all, because Barnes Road, David Barnes, I can remember him well, went to school. His son, firefighter who died in a fire in central Reading in 77, would need to go on that list because he was a cabishing person. So if we're going to get rid of the list, then not, not all of them, but some of them. Not all of us love golf, by the way.
I fully agree. I have absolutely no knowledge of golf myself. Councillor Moore.
Yeah, I agree with pretty much what everyone else has said. I just kind of want to sort of talk about, you know, whether we should indeed, as councillor Rowland said, review the approved street list. And I don't really know how a lot of these are decided and how they've come there in the first place. Specifically, I'm looking at one called Tallow Way. Is it really appropriate to call a road after rendered beef fat? I mean, really, is, a genuine question, is that, is that an appropriate name for a new road? When we, we've got plenty of other good options out there for the future. That's kind of just the point. It'd be really good if we could consider reviewing the whole list. Thanks.
And councillor Goss.
Thank you. And I think that one of the problems of speaking, what I assume will be last on this issue, is that all the points I wanted to make have been made already. So I reiterate that the name should have much more local resonance than they do. I mean, Tilly Terrace particularly jumped out at me. If, as suggested in the table, we are going to name a street after Her Majesty of Blessed Memory, perhaps Elizabeth Meadow, rather than just plainly Monarch Meadow, might be more appropriate as well. And I fully agree that we really should review the list of names from which we can choose whenever it comes to naming streets, because we aren't, officers aren't spoilt for choice whenever it comes to the matter. I was particularly struck by some of the naval vessels that are listed as possible options for street names as well. And as a historian, I've looked into them, and I must say that they're not particularly impressive bunch of ships for us to be honouring in Reading. If we are going down the route of naming streets after the navy, perhaps we should opt for inclusion of HMS Dauntless on the list, the Renn training station just outside Reading, which would be more appropriate than several 18th-century vessels that were captured by the French or the Spanish.
Sorry, I'm not sure if it's appropriate for me to laugh, but, yes, okay, thank you. Have any other councillors got comments? Yes, exactly. Well, I'm now regretting that I'm Chair somewhat, but. So pushing this back to officers, I'm not sure you're expecting quite so many comments and how that works process-wise. Could we, one of you maybe, or many of you come back?
Yes, thank you, Chair. We're trying to sort of collate all these. We can hear from members that there are certain names and themes that people are getting interested in. I think we probably need a sort of specific list of names, because there's a consultation process to go through. Now, this is my area of expertise. I was hoping you would, Heather.
Right, Heather, hi.
Yes, so just to fill you in on the process that needs to be undertaken as to the councils.
Could you bring the mic closer?
Just to fill you in on the process that needs to be undertaken due, because of the protocol of the council. First off, we need to check the names against a list of requirements to check their validity. For example, checks to make sure that those road names aren't in use anymore. There are a number of checks to address a few of the ones that you've mentioned quickly. Elizabeth Road, anything with a royal connotation needs to be, to go through a royal check first for approval there, so that's an additional step that needs to be undertaken. So you may wish to consider that one, although obviously we can do that if you'd like to go down that route. But no guarantees that that will be approved. Any other names that aren't appropriate will not be able to be used. So yes, like I mentioned, things that are duplicated, things that are nearby, things that sound too similar to existing roads, for example. Once that list has been checked by us for approval, then we have a two-week consultation period with the councillors of the ward and councillor Lang. And after that, if there are no comments, this report is taken to PAC, where we are now. And if it's approved, then we will move on to our process of implementing those street names in the area. So if you wish to reproduce a new list of roads, then we will need to start this process again. I would like to point out that my team have a three-month service-level agreement on putting these streets into implementation, and that will, the deadline will be coming up towards the end of this month. So you will be delaying our process by two months, which I appreciate you perhaps don't care about, but from our perspective, is not a good, it doesn't, is not good for the customers on the other end, and it delays them further. So please consider that when you are making your decisions today. In regards to the street naming list, you are able to submit names to that at any point by filling in the form online or by emailing the street naming numbering team. We will check those lists for their suitability, and then send that through to the PAC for approval to be added on to the approved names list. So the process exists, you just haven't used it for a while. But yes, I agree with some of the names on the road, we could perhaps make some more exciting names there.
Right. I've got an indication from councillor Lang, but I want to clarify the process before we go any further. So we've got a number of suggestions, and they're all verbal, so it would be quite possible to get them noted down wrong and what have you. So what is the best way to correct this? So that, I mean, because clearly we'll need to have some sort of, so do we vote, do we first of all vote to reject the names that are suggested, and then that we as councillors would supply a list of suggested names for checking?
There's no precedent for this, so.
Well, then we'll have to, I guess we'll end up saying it. But if there's no precedent for it, then next I'm going to take councillor Lang, because he is the lead for planning.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I'm glad my name was mentioned in dispatches by officer Porter. Yeah, I understand that this may extend things a little, delay things, but I think it's important. And as councillor Gavin said, and councillor Robinson, well, all councillors in fact, I think we're united on this side, that it should be relevant to the area. And I do recognise that John O'Curran, there is a Curtain Close in Norcott Ward, but Curtain Terrace is the one that I've put forward, so nudge, nudge. Yeah, so we recognise that there are issues with it, but I think it's important enough. And to be honest, I wasn't, I didn't exactly stand back in amazement when I read that list, if I was honest. So hence I started thinking about it. And yeah, that's where we are. I hope we can, I hope this, in effect, does set precedent. Thank you.
I've got an indication from councillor Robinson.
Thank you, Chair. Just one other comment, really, and that's the fact that Bodys Homes are calling the development Emma Green Drive. So was there any, an idea behind calling it Emma Green Drive that that would actually be a road name within the development as well? Just a thought.
And councillor Moore.
Yeah, just going back to the SLA that Heather spoke about, is there any penalty or any consequences for us not meeting the SLA to the council?
That is a very good question.
Thank you.
I actually haven't, I'm not sure. So I'd have to take that way and check for you.
Okay, so it's not quite an impasse, but basically councillors are unhappy with the entire list. And all I want to know really is, how do we get those names that have been suggested for consideration? Because you're going to need to have a list of them. So do you want councillors to individually email them to the Chair and Vice Chair?
I think at this juncture, Chair, I'm just feeling my way through here, is just to possibly answer. just, just to possibly answer Heather's question there about the SLA. It might be worth, worth just noting what, what, if she could tell us what impact this would have for the development and getting the development going. Maybe we need to hear that as well. But in terms of the suggested, suggested ones, whichever they are, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. So we've got nine there. We probably need to hear first of all individually which ones we, the committee likes and does not like. So if we get, go, get through that hurdle first. And then we'll move on to what we're doing with the reserve list. And then we'll look at the implications for any other names. Is that okay?
Yeah, I think that's absolutely fine. I think we do need to, sorry. We do need to establish whether the proposals put forward are acceptable or not, which ones are acceptable.
So let's go through each of the names. We go through each of the names on the list, on the actual list of suggested names. Since the committee agrees with any of them. If they do, then those names can potentially stay. But, and how are we going to deal with the suggested names? Because nobody is suggesting from the, the, the reserve list that I can remember.
No, and it sounds as if, I'm learning more about this.
What we're saying is that there is a bunch of names, they would like them checked for validity.
Yes.
And if they're not, then we have to come back and only select from the valid list.
That would be the, the next thing to do. There are numbers.
We could do that for the next committee potentially.
It would be good if you would be able to select them prior to this, because, so prior to them coming through to the next committee.
I agree.
We can check them and tell you which ones would be approved in accordance with the guidelines and then you can select which ones you actually want.
Because my, my, I, I can't remember all of the names that were suggested. But my feeling is that if any of these are selected from the, the existing list, like for instance, the Fairway, which might fit with councillor Gavin's suggestion, then all we're doing is potentially you'll have maybe ten or fifteen suggested names. And we may get quite close to the total that's on here. So to start, I'm going to go through the names on the list and can you, if you object to the name, perhaps put your, your hand up. I don't know, we're, we're making this up as we go along, aren't we? I think put your hand up to object and then, because then if, so the Fairway. Do you have any objections to that? No. Right. Fox Crescent. No. Tallow Way. Right. Falcon Green. That's a bit, right, you all need to vote, by the way, if you, because. Right, that's, I think that's a majority of, you don't put your hands down. That's a majority of objections to me, or it was. Can you put your hands up for Falcon Green if you object to it? Right, that is one, two, three, four, five, that's at least seven. Right. Monarch Meadow. That's, right. Saunderson View. That's, that's a majority. Thornycroft Way. That's one, two, three, four, five. That's a, that's seven. Right. Tilly Terrace. You don't like that? Barnes Road. Right. So we've actually got, three of the, three on the list are acceptable or agreed to the committee, by the committee. I didn't vote on any of those because I didn't need to. So, but that means that six of the names on here that currently the committee rejects. Okay. Now, we've got a number of names and I suspect we're well more than six. So if there is, say, ten names and of those, six of those are acceptable, then that would be the proposed list, if that is. But I appreciate it's quite complicated to, there's, there's a series of checks. So now all I need from officers though is how can I get names from my colleagues to you? What's an acceptable way to do that?
Okay, I think.
I would like to just ask a question to clarify the process. So for example, say you've come through with ten potential names and they are all approved. Which ones would you like?
I guess we get to vote on that at the committee. Could do. I don't mind.
Are you happy with that decision?
I don't know if I get to make that decision.
This is all out of procedure, to be honest. There's no procedure around it.
I mean, I'm more than happy to do that. And if, if the committee agrees, then yeah. If the, because the committee agree that if there is more than, more names than are, that you are, you are suggesting, in addition to the Fairway, Fox Crescent and Barnes Road, then the Chair, Vice Chair and Ward councillors will agree on which ones will be, yeah. Wow, look at that.
I might suggest that we keep the other ones as well for the list.
Well, but we may have to pick some off of the reserve list to, to make up the numbers if a number of our suggestions from the councillors are rejected. Yeah?
Yeah.
Have we got all of that down? Somebody?
Chair, Chair.
Yeah, it's been recorded. Good call.
Could I just clarify how my, you know, Sunday afternoon musings are going to get from this piece of paper to be considered?
Through you, through you Chair, what we've discussed here is what, what we've heard is we, we, we're clear that you like three out of the nine. Six were rejected. We heard some, some names were, were sort of brought up, but they weren't very clear. So we think what needs to happen now is that that is clearly deferred for consideration. We need to probably hear from members directly on their names for suggestion. And then that is brought back to the committee.
So who are they, who are they contacting?
Yeah, we think Heather.
Could you please email the street naming and numbering email addresses in the address book?
So that she can go through the appropriate tracks as, as Heather has set out.
So do we all understand that? Members? Well, you do because most of you are saying yes. So we'll, we'll work it out later. But, okay, so that.
Sorry, could I just interrupt?
Yes, no, of course.
Please, could we have those within the week? So by the end of next week? So we can progress quickly and hopefully meet the next committee meeting.
Yeah, can you email them in the next couple of days, please? I'm sure that that's possible. Yep. And I know that that, that some of these names mean a lot to you because you've expressed that during the, the committee. So I'm sure that, you know, you'll understand that we've basically slightly destroyed the process. And to make that possible for us to get it, our names on the list, we need to get them in quickly.
So Chair, just to be absolutely clear, are we saying the sixth, i.e. this Friday is the deadline or the thirteenth?
Heather said a week, but I'm suggesting to my colleagues that they do it as quick as possible.
Quicker would be nice though.
And as soon as, as, so yeah, as soon as they can. Is that okay for a week? I mean, a week would be Wednesday. Is that, is that too long for you?
Let me just calculate.
Councillor Davis.
Can I just make the point that councillors choosing names of streets is a completely normal thing? As far as I'm concerned. And I don't understand why there isn't a process to support it.
Yep.
And why are we cobbling it together and why are we being pushed for a deadline?
I've been on this committee for about eighteen months now. And the only time we've done this in that time was for one street.
But eighteen months isn't very long with, you know, to be, to be fair, we've named a lot of streets, so.
No, no, it isn't.
Can we, can we, outside this, is it possible to clarify a process that, so we don't end up here again?
Agreed.
That's all right.
Can I respond to that? It's actually not usual that the planning committee would approve street naming numbering. This is one of the very few places that I'm aware that that happens. Normally it's just a deferred process by a team within the council staff. So I think we do need to review this process too. It is ten years old now.
And councillor Davis.
Chair, I don't, I don't actually care what happens elsewhere. You know, if we're being presented with a list of names here, obviously this is for consideration of the committee, right? If it isn't, then it shouldn't be on here. We've been asked to approve it. Now we're being told there isn't really a process. It's completely unprecedented. How on earth could we do this? Right? So I would ask if we are going to be continually in the future offered to, asked to approve a list of names, then we have a process. That covers it, okay? Because this isn't really ideal.
Well, and Heather's actually also said that if you do have names that mean something to you, then you can suggest them in the general process, rather than waiting for a specific road name to be, to be done. That's my understanding of it. Councillor Lang, and then we're going to move on.
Yeah, thank you Chair. I know we spent a lot of time on this. I don't want to think I just rocked up and thought I was going to throw a name out there. I did, I did check with the, with the Chair of PAC that this was possible and it was, it was okayed. You know, so if this is setting precedent, then so be it. I mean, we're not talking one street, we're talking an estate. So, you know, I think it is relevant that there is some input. I mean, if, if eight names would have been there and there was three blank, that, you know, that where local councillors such as councillor Robinson and Gos had said they'd spoken with their residents or something like that, I would have happily accepted it. But there was no sort of consultation as such. I mean, in this council, we consult on absolutely everything, you know. So to have some sort of discussion even with ward councillors, I don't think is, is beyond the pale. If it does affect the knock on, you know, for the construction phase, which I do find slightly absurd if it does, they can call them A, B, C, D, E, F, G until the, until the streets are really, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Right. We're happy with, with all of that, I think. Yeah? Can we, shall we move on to the, right, so we have actually got public speaking on the Hills Meadow item. So I'm going to take that first of the, the actual planning applications. So is that, are the public speakers here for that? Yep. And that's Richard, is it Richard Standing? Hi. If you, you see the microphone in front of you there, if you want to take a seat and, sorry. But if you can hang on just a sec while we introduce the item.
Thank you Chair. The proposed development seeks temporary planning permission for the erection of an ice rink, marquee structure and silvery side stalls in connection with a Christmas festival for a period of time not to be before the fifteenth of October twenty twenty three and not to extend beyond the twenty first of January twenty twenty four at Hills Meadow Car Park. With the event, with the event itself open to the public from the eleventh of November up until the seventh of January twenty twenty four. There is an update to this item, which includes the addition of a sound levels compliance condition to the recommendation. This follows further discussions with the environmental protection team and the applicant regarding the sound levels of music from the event and the impact that this has on the living conditions of neighbouring residents. The Redding Winter Wonderland Christmas event has run annually from the site since twenty twenty one, prior to which the event was held at Forby Gardens. Aside from the addition of the compliance condition in relation to sound levels, the, the conditions recommended are replicated from the previous year's approval. The recommendation is to approve temporary planning permission subject to conditions as outlined in the update report. Thank you.
Right, so Mr. Standing, it's your turn to speak. We've got the developer here as well, have we? And you get five minutes to speak, each of you. That'll be timed. Now, once you finish speaking, councillors may have questions for you. But if they don't, then it will be the turn of the other speaker. Okay?
Having read the extra condition that's been inserted and spoken to Mr. Williams.
You might want to bring the mic a bit nearer so that, yeah.
Having read the extra condition that's been inserted and spoken to Mr. Williams just prior to the meeting, and he's now told me that the actual event won't start till fifteenth of November. So it's not going to be a, the whole, open for the whole three months. Whilst I have a little concern about the duration of the event, provided that the condition is met about the, the sound levels, I, I withdraw my objection.
Okay, thank you very much. In that case, do we need the developer to speak? And councillors? I mean, they don't really need to ask questions though, do they? Would you like to, would you like to speak for clarity? I mean, just.
Thank you Chair. Good evening everybody. Just thank you for looking through the proposal, to be honest with you. Ninth year coming up now. We've grown it from an acorn and I think we've grown into something good for the town. Every condition each year, I, I toe the line, to be honest with you. I do as I'm told. There's some things I even make a bit harder on myself. But just to keep the peace and look after locals, to be honest with you. So any questions, just please ask, but nothing else to say, to be honest.
Do your councillors have any questions at this point? No, thank you for coming up. You do have a question or is it a comment? Is it questions of, yes?
Thank you very much Chair. Thank you very much for coming in. And obviously thank you for speaking to the resident and you've managed to deal with that outside of the meeting. So thank you very much. The, the new condition is regarding sound levels. If local residents do feel affected by sound, are they all given a published contact number with which to contact you at the time? And is that responded to in a timely fashion?
Yeah, my, my number, we do a mail drop for the certain states which need to be done. Kingfisher Close and one other, I can't remember off the top of my head. But my number, my personal number is on the website, on Facebook page. My number's everywhere. It's on twenty four seven. If I'm having a snooze, then my son's in charge of it all. In last year, we had two phone calls on my number. One was a nonsense one and one was one, Kingfisher Close, the wind was blowing that way. So we dealt with it within a few minutes. I prefer that rather than, than wasting everybody's time in the council. Phone on a Friday, I get the message Monday afternoon and I've had all weekend, we, it could have been a problem. But as I said, everybody phones me within minutes. I can have, if there is a problem, I'll have it resolved.
Councillor Davis.
I don't have a question. We're going to start the debate.
But actually, we've got no more questions. Oh, you've got a question councillor Ennis. Okay.
Thank you Chair. I'm sorry, I'm a little bit hard of hearing down here and there was a lot of quick, I didn't quite understand the, that there has been a potential agreement reached for the fifteenth.
They've, they've spoken, they've spoken to the, Mr. Standing who had the complaint. He's withdrawn his complaint because he actually spoke to the developer while they were sitting there.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I just couldn't hear. So thank you. Okay.
So thanks for, for coming in.
Thank you.
Yeah. Now, do councillors have any comments on this item?
Thanks Chair. Yeah, this is in the ward that I represent. Actually, it's a well attended, pretty well run event. It's only run there on that location since twenty twenty one, but there have been events on that Hills Meadow. The hard standing bit of Hills Meadow for a long time. And actually, we've, we've got very few, if any, complaints from residents the last couple of years. And there seem to be quite a few safeguards in place in the report. It's, it is distanced from the residents' gardens on the Caversham side by the grass bit of Hills Meadow, the meadowy bit. The other side of the river is probably a little bit closer, but it's, it's, there's some shielding of the trees, et cetera. So I, I think that on balance there, you know, the amenity it brings and the popularity is, is far, far outweighs any, any problem we've seen. And we've seen this evening that the developer is pretty flexible about wanting to make sure the community's happy. And if he is, then I'm happy. So I'll support it.
Thank you councillor Davis. Any other comments? Nope. Then in that case, I guess we need to, need to vote on it? To accept, yeah, so do you want, yeah, so members need to approve it? Okay, next item is hundred and four to hundred and five Fire Street. That's the end of the public speaking. And I think I've got David to introduce it.
Thank you Chair. The proposed development is for the change of use of two adult gaming centre at one.
Sorry David, can I interrupt you? Can everybody, when they're speaking, bring their microphones as close as mine is? And if you don't really speak that loudly, can you bring it just a little bit closer? Because I know that some of my colleagues won't be able to hear.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you Chair. The. The proposed development is for the change of use to an adult gaming centre at 104 to 105 Friar Street. At our September meeting, consideration of this planning application was deferred to establish whether the development resulted in clustering of similar uses within one area of the town, town centre, in relation to the range and diversity of leisure uses. Whether it would impact the requirements for active franchises in the town centre. And lastly, whether there had been an active search for other uses for the premises since the closure of the cafe of, on, on the site in March 2023. There is an update to this item, which includes a statement from the agent for the application and discusses the reasons for, for the deferral. The main report for this application discusses the reasons for the deferral, with the recommendation still to approve the application, subject to conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got councillor Roland first.
Thank you, and I thank the officers, not only for speaking into the microphone so I can actually hear, but also for addressing the concerns that I brought up. As a ward councillor, obviously, I, you know, we're all, we're all responsible for Reading, Reading's town centre because it does belong to all of us. I naturally raised concerns about the closeness of, of spacing of what I saw was for adult gaming centres. And I will still say that within about 100 metres of walking pavement, we will be looking at for adult gaming centres. And I, and taking that on board and looking at the 150-metre circle and radius, that, that still, I can look in there and I can see there's four right there in the centre. And so I'm not exactly sure because my visual sits down there and tells me that, that there are more in the centre and there are four that are very close together. What I do realise and what I do accept and understand is that within our current structure of the local plan, the way that we, we have it phrased and the, the lack of any specification about adult gaming centres and, and around quantities, around, around a concentration or anything like that. We do not really have the power within our local plan right now, I believe. It's just, it's not in there to sit down there and refuse this application. What I will say is that, is that this kind of activity, and we do have family homes coming in, the update report alludes to that very specifically in Station Hill. And even though it does state that there are no families currently living right there, I am familiar personally as a ward councillor of at least one family that is living in a student accommodation with a, a child with some learning challenges that living there in that, in that area can be challenging. And do I also say that adult gaming centres contribute significantly to that? No, we also have a night time economy there that may perhaps be more boisterous. But it is something that I think that we need to look at in, in the local plan as we are reviewing it right now. And to see what kind of structures we can do around this. We have, I mean, when we look at adult gaming centres, for example, we, we do note in the report that this is a non-drinking establishment and that this is not promoting drinking. I do take that on board. But I think that we can all understand, no matter how well these properties are managed, no matter the safeguarding and everything in place, that a gaming centre can be a, a place wherein addictions of another kind can take place and form. And I think that we all unanimously suggested that, that officers go out back and do this work. So to developers that are looking to come in and think that they can put in adult gaming centres everywhere, I would ask that they seriously consider that we will be having families living in our town centre. We are building and increasing our residential makeup in the town centre. And they want a variety, and I do mean a variety of uses. There are currently a variety of uses in the town centre. But I think that we need to be very, very conscious of that. And I do want them to really consider that going forward. And I am, I, I will be very adamant in looking at the ways that the local plan can put some guidelines down about adult gaming centres. As an aside, I will also look at what kind of, what kind of arrangements we can do around food establishments or, or fast food establishments near elementary schools or, or, you know, primary schools too. Because that's another situation, but that's obviously an aside and maybe a bone that I'm picking. But at any rate, I do, I do realise that we do not have the power to turn this down and reject this this evening. So I do thank again the officers for their attention to detail and I will go with the officer recommendation. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Ennis, I think you indicated? Nope. Then councillor Williams?
Thank you, Chair. Oh, I'm going to bring that a bit closer. I concur with everything that councillor Roland has said and support it fully. I'm just going to say a couple of things. The summary on our original report from the last meeting says that this adult gaming centre will contribute positively, will complement existing uses and, I think most worryingly for me, offer an alternative to drinking. And I think those are three very bold statements that I don't necessarily agree with, Chair. Each new gaming or gambling centre comes with a potential risk, excuse me, potential risk of gambling-related harm to vulnerable people. And we, we've discussed that this would be alongside a betting shop and three existing gaming centres. So I can see quite why Abbey councillors called this in and quite why councillor Roland deferred this for further consideration. I think where the report concludes there's no evidence of harm, I think perhaps that's correct. There's no evidence of harm for this one additional centre. And with a shift to online gaming, perhaps it's even harder to assess harm now, Chair. But I think, just like councillor Roland, we need to make a plea to those responsible for the updates to the next local plan to include gambling in their thinking. There's substantial evidence of harm caused by gambling across the country. The proliferation of gambling sites, where these are located, other local authorities, Westminster, Tower Hamlets, New, I think even Sheffield, where I'm from originally, have put policies into their local plans to control gambling, I think both from a licensing and planning perspective. We should attempt to do the same, Chair. But I agree, until then, it's not at all clear how we could refuse this. So I support councillor Roland's view to go with officers' recommendation. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Lang?
Apologies, Chair. I, I wasn't going to comment and I thought, yeah, I will because I'm, you know, I quite often mention subliminal messaging, don't I? You know, I think it's important. And there was a sentence, it goes, it also shows that there's a healthy mix of both pleasure, late night operators and retailers, you know, vaping, vaping stores, pubs, bars, restaurants, you know, healthy. Can we find, find another word maybe? I know what you mean, but you know what? I'm all for the subliminal messaging, so but let's, let's get it right. Okay, thank you, Chair.
Councillor Davis?
Well, I wasn't going to speak either, but.
You don't have to.
But, you know, none of us are going to speak. Everyone says that, don't they? I wasn't going to speak. But I mean, I, you know, I'm affected by what other people have said. I think it's, I wanted to reiterate that as well and add my sentiments to that in agreement. There's, there seems to be a focus in this report on ASB, potential ASB harm. When we think about our policies, I'm sure we will do that in light of this, that isn't the only harm that can come from these places. And it's not always linked to alcohol because there are other sources of potential harm, aren't there? And we all know that. So, but ultimately, you know, that's not related to this application. It's really about future applications and how we can change policies to reflect our disquiet. I think I'm safe in saying.
Okay, can we take a vote on this then, if there's no more comments? Are we, are we agreed with the officer recommendation? Okay. Next item is the Ridgeway School and that is, I said it was Marcy, but there's, can't see them on, oh, you're here. I thought you were online, but you're still here.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
I'm Marcy. Yes, so planning permission is sought by Ridgeway Primary School to retain a double modular demountable unit on site. So it's already in place, as well as temporary permission to retain the unit for an additional five years, so until 2028, to provide classrooms for SEND pupils. The unit is existing. It's not been in use since 2017, so don't know if you can tell from the photos, it's pretty overgrown. The unit requires some urgent repairs. The proposal includes new fencing around the unit, but the details of which are to be secured via condition. They've not been supplied at this stage. The retention of the unit is not considered to negatively impact the closest residential properties in Lambourne Gardens. The sightings of the unit is not considered to negatively impact the amount of playing field at the school either. The school has permission to operate as a three-form-of-entry FE school, but it currently operates as a two FE school. And as such, the proposal is not considered to create any additional pressure on staffing. It is therefore recommended that permission is granted to bring the, bring the unit back into use for a further five years. Thank you.
Thank you. And apologies, I didn't realise I hadn't been, hadn't met you before. So councillor Hornsby Smith?
Thank you, Chair. This is in my ward and I'm delighted that this proposal is coming forward. Ridgeway is a, is a very popular school. And I know that councillor McEwan is one of the school governors there and I, I know that she reports back to me regularly about how hard, how hardworking the team is of the school governors and the staff at the school. So this proposal is, is bringing back a, a building into use, which is very welcome. And, and secondly, it is increasingly provisioned for SEND children. And I particularly appreciate that there's a separate entrance for those children, which, which will help ease their passageway through school. It also allows for the repairs that are needed to take place and that's also very welcome. So there's, there's nothing from the report that indicates, other than, you know, the condition about checking out the fencing, et cetera. There's nothing in the report that could be remotely opposed to, I don't think. And, and indeed, it's very welcome. So thank you very much.
Anyone else? Nope. In that case, thank you councillor Hornsby Smith. Can we, are we agreed with the officer recommendation? Right, thank you. I'll keep turning the microphone off. Next is 24 Lesford Road in Coley Ward and that is Richard.
Thank you, Chair. Permission was originally granted in February 2022 for parking at this site for a temporary period of 18 months to assist displaced vehicles during close-by redevelopment works on the Wensley Road Estate. Delays in the completion of the nearby redevelopment necessitates this proposal for the space to provide parking for a further period of 18 months. There have been no known significant issues arising at the site since the original proposal. The policy context has not altered enabling this application to be supported by officers. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Richard. Councillor Gavin is indicating.
Thank you, Chair. This looks like a very sensible application for reasons which are, are out of our control. There had been delays in the, in the building works. And this temporary car park, we just need to, the, the applicant needs to extend its use whilst the building work is, is complete. I see absolutely no reason why we should refuse this. It seems a sensible and a way forward. So I would urge committee to support this application. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gavin. Is the committee minded to agree with the recommended? They are. Right, excellent. This looks like people want to. Okay, so that's agreed. The next item is nine Upper Crown Street. And we have Tom.
Good evening, everyone. So as you can see, this, this site is on the northern side of Upper Crown Street, which is just off Southampton Street on the edge of the, the town centre boundary, just outside the town centre boundary, I should say. So it's currently a data storage facility, which has roof access, which provides car parking spaces, which currently serve surrounding flats and businesses which are outside the site, as well as a few spaces for the, the data centre. The current proposal is similar to a previous application, which was refused under delegated authority and then subsequently dismissed at appeal on a single ground relating to the proximity of building two to the proposed terrace of houses. The, so the proposal would demolish the majority of the structures on the site and create three buildings comprising 46 units, residential units, as well as a basement car park. The, the unit mix would be 22 one-bedroom units, 16 two-bedroom units and eight three-bedroom units with a 30% affordable housing offer, which equates to 14 units. Building one would be two-story houses, which face directly onto Upper Crown Street. Building two would be four stories with the top story set back from the edges and comprises of flats. And building three is five stories with the top story set back and again, again flats. The existing vehicle access is retained as existing and car parking would be, the existing car parking on site would be re-provided in the basement car parking, which replace, replaces the leased spaces to the neighbouring, neighbouring sites as they're on long, as in almost a thousand-year-long leases. The applicants, in terms of the changes to the previous, from the previous scheme, which was refused and dismissed at appeal, the applicants have moved building two away from building one by approximately two metres, which is considered by officers to overcome the inspector's only concern about the scheme. And to be clear, the inspector, the other reasons for refusal, the inspector felt were, were, that, you know, were acceptable and didn't, didn't use them to dismiss the, the scheme. The only, the only issue he had with regards to impact on future residents within the scheme or neighbours without the scheme was purely that, that proximity of building one and two. And so consider that, due to that change, officers consider the proposed, the new proposal has overcome the inspector's reasons for refusal and approval is recommended, subject to conditions and a legal agreement to secure the affordable housing sustainability offset contribution and the employment skills and training contribution.
Thank you, Tom. I've got councillor Lang first.
Thank you, Chair, and thanks, thanks, Tom, for your report. Obviously, the elephant in the room is first mentioned in 1.2. The inspector's decision from the previous appeal is a significant material consideration and must be given due weight, which we, I'm sure we will, will as committee. I welcome the 30% compliant affordable home. But as for one-bed first homes, which I, on a personal level, don't accept as being affordable housing. But that's a debate for, for, for another day. Developers have obviously looked at the previous appeal. You know, they're intelligent people. They, they've altered, altered the application to suit. You said two metres, I thought, I thought I read it as 1.6, but I'm probably wrong, you being the expert of.
So depending on where you measure it from the ground, from the first, it fluctuates, but it, it isn't quite two metres, it is under two metres, but.
Yeah, yeah. And they've obviously sorted out the overlooking for the mansard roof into the gardens. And the bonus for the people that will be buying the houses, which isn't the affordable housing, by the way, they will get the longer gardens. So I, I, where we are, I welcome it. It could have been better, you know, but I'm sure they will make lovely homes for people in the future. There is a smashing courtyard development just up the road, you know, which I, I think is one of my favourite ones. And of course, we, we were unlucky with another appeal just around the corner. So with appeals, we're not having the best times at the moment. So anyway, we are where we are. And on the whole, I now support this application. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lang. I had councillor Williams.
Thank you, Chair. I've got, I've got, I think I'm going to probably agree with much of what councillor Lang has said and touch on the same stuff, but I've got a question that, that our officers had a number of problems with this scheme and the inspector only had one problem sadly, only agreeing with one, which was the sighting and the. problem, sadly, only agreeing with one, which was the sighting and the scale of one building overbearing another. And it's been moved back, as councillor Lang said, not even two metres, about 1.75, it fluctuates slightly, but we're talking about five and a half feet. My question is, how do we know that that is the amount of distance it needed moving back by to satisfy the planning inspector? It seems like, I put a tape measure out on the floor earlier, Chair, it seems a derisory amount, five foot, really, to shift a building back by when we know, not only did our officers have an issue with it, but the planning inspector confirmed it was an issue, and we're moving it about five and a half feet. It has been moved, and like councillor Lang, I welcome the affordable housing. Much of this is good, but how do we know that that five feet makes a difference? Because I'm questioning that, Chair.
I don't have that answer. Are you able to?
Yeah, I can talk more about that. So the main concern the inspector had was essentially the proximity of the wall of that building. So it wasn't privacy, it was more sort of overbearing and the scale of it. And so just to be clear on that, the additional sort of, it's between one and a half and two metres setback, officers consider it acceptable, given the, part of the problem with this site is quite restricted in terms of where you can move buildings to, given the access that's needed around the bill form. So there's only sort of so much movement of buildings they could possibly do. Given the length, the additional length of the gardens and the, you know, the scale of the building, you know, officers consider that this does address inspector's concerns, and, you know, it would be acceptable in this instance. Another thing to sort of note from the inspector's decision is the distances between the blocks of flats, not building one and two, buildings two and three, is approximately between nine and 10 metres, which the inspector found to be acceptable. And although it's not quite the same, because it's a block of flats against houses, that distance is about 12 metres now, whereas before it was similar to the other, or a bit less, in fact. So given sort of the inspector's points on that throughout the report and the setback that they have made, we now, we consider that acceptable.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
I wonder if I could ask another question, if that's okay, Chair? And then I'll be quiet.
I don't know.
Are you going to allow it?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. There's a number of, I'm still not happy with five feet, but anyway, we'll come back to that. There's a number of responses from residents who had a number of concerns. I particularly enjoy that some residents had concerns there was too much car parking, and some that there was too little car parking. However, one of the real and genuine concerns that people are going to have is the disruption caused by construction. So I wonder if, because there'll be a construction method statement, if I'm using the right terminology, and there'll be a condition, but I wonder if officers could give us a very brief outline of how that happens and how residents can feel comfortable that if this is constructed, they're kind of looked after by a methodology that keeps them safe from construction, noise, dust, et cetera, and working hours, for example.
Tom, can I just take councillor Lang's question as well? Because he wants to come back now, and that might cover, I don't know.
No, it's to clarify a comment that I'd made, actually.
Oh, okay then.
I thought mine came across as if I said we'd lost the appeal. No, we won the appeal, but it was a shallow victory. That was the point I was trying to make. With the car parking space with councillor Williams, you can never have enough car parking space, as far as I'm concerned, but what you can have is lack of amenity space and community space. So that's the only time I will ever give up on car parking space, from a personal perspective. Thank you.
Okay, Tom.
So, yeah, so in terms of the construction method statement or management plan, essentially that would be submitted, obviously, to us as part of the condition. That's then assessed by our Transport and Highways team in terms of how they will, and it includes a huge variety of things, including dust, noise, when deliveries take place, when construction takes place, all of that. And it's something that is taken, you know, often it's one of the conditions, in my experience, that has the most negotiation and the most scrutiny, because it is one of the things that obviously development happens, but to make it happen in an acceptable way and a safe way that isn't too disruptive to residents is really important. And so, you know, that's a key condition, and it is, you know, very well monitored and assessed when they come in with the application. And generally, developers will already have thought about how they're going to develop a site prior to submitting their application and even during the application, and, you know, are well aware of the issues that it can cause, and, you know, things can grind to a bit of a halt if they don't have a good construction management plan for officers to assess and approve.
Thank you, Tom. Are you satisfied with that, councillor Williams?
Yes, thank you very much, Chair.
Okay. Right, then we need to vote on this and whether we agree that the application should be permitted. Please. Thank you. Right, on to the final item, which, oh, are you? Okay, thanks. Right. Is that noted, that councillor Williams has voted? Yep. Thank you. Right. Next item is Bennet Road, I think. Yeah, and that's Steve.
Thank you, Chair. It's an application by Reading Borough Council, under Regulation 3, for an extension to the council's vehicle maintenance workshop depot at 19 Bennet Road. The proposal will allow for larger vehicles to be worked on simultaneously compared with what's possible currently, as well as providing some office space. The proposal is considered acceptable in terms of design and sustainability in the context, with no adverse impact on the character of the area, neighbouring immunity, or surrounding highways. The application is recommended for approval, subject to conditions as set out in the main agenda. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Rowland would like to speak.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, as the lead member for environmental services, obviously, I have no coonery interest in this, but I am certainly in favour of this as a further expansion of our workshop, which is essential for delivering the larger fleet, an electrified fleet, which is something that we are delivering on in response to the climate emergency. And this is going to make us, our fleet more accessible and with greater turnaround, and allow for improved services for our vehicles and reduce the downtime that we've got to wait. So I would thoroughly ask for colleagues' support on this. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Rowland. Any other comments? Nope, it looks like people want to go home. Okay, so can we please vote on whether we agree on that? Is that unanimous this time? Thank you. Right. That concludes the meeting, then. I don't think I have to do anything else, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Well shared.